With that, we have our consent agenda. I don't think there's any additions to that agenda. And we have the minutes from the January 17th meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the minutes.
There's a motion. Is there a second? And there is a second. Any other discussion? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, we're going to go to number four, non-consent, and we're going to move that over to John Kolb, who's going to tell us more about the ditch process today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public present. The county board has convened today as the Drainage Authority for Scott County Ditch 10 in order to hold a public hearing on the proposed repair of Scott County Ditch 10. On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everyone who's attendance, who is attending this morning. The purpose of the meeting is to receive comments and testimony from all parties interested in the proposed repair of Scott County Ditch Number 10. Please note that the proceedings are being recorded and notes are being taken by staff to facilitate the creation of a record. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. First, following this brief introduction, I will explain the process which has brought us to this public hearing today and the purpose of this hearing. Following me, county staff will review the notices given for the hearing today. And following the recitation of notices, the engineers appointed in the proceedings will prepare, will give a presentation regarding the proposed repair and repair options. Today's proceedings are being conducted under Minnesota Statute Section 103E.715, which is the Drainage Code section governing formal proceedings for repair of public drainage systems. After receiving the presentations today, the board would like to hear interested persons' comments on the repair. If at the appropriate time when public comment is opened you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. When the board chair recognizes you, state your name and address for the record. It will also be helpful for staff if you can describe where your property is in the watershed area of the drainage system by section, township, and range, or other identifying feature if it is not the address that you've stated in the record. If you have a specific question concerning the proceedings or the repair report, the county board may ask legal counsel, the engineer, or staff to respond. And if you have anything in writing you wish to submit, you can provide that during the public comment portion of the hearing. The term "repair" under the Drainage Code means to restore all or part of a drainage system as nearly as is practicable to the same hydraulic capacity as originally constructed and subsequently improved, including re-sloping of ditches, leveling of spoiling banks, spoil, spoil banks, and removal of trees that are inhibiting either the flow of water in the ditch or preventing access to the ditch for maintenance or inspection purposes. An individual or entity interested or affected by a drainage system, meaning they are, have been determined to be benefited by that drainage system, may file a petition for the repair of the drainage system. If the Drainage Authority determines that the drainage system needs repair, the Drainage Authority will appoint an engineer to examine the drainage system and make a repair report. The report must show the necessary repairs, estimated cost of repairs, and all detail, details, plans, and specifications necessary to prepare and award a contract for the repair. The board has to follow a standard of decision in making a determination as to whether the repairs are necessary and whether the, the repair should proceed forward. If the repair or other work affecting a public drainage system is considered by the board, the board has to first consider whether or not the system is operating as its, at its established hydraulic capacity. This could be affected by accumulations of sediment and other debris in the ditch, the placement or sizing of culverts at improper elevations or improper sizes, or other factors influencing the flow of water in the ditch. This ditch was originally inspected on instruction of the county board, and later, a petition for repair was received by the county board which initiated these proceedings. Over the course of months, the engineers have reviewed this system, came up with an initial scope of repairs which was presented to landowners. Based on landowner comments, county staff returned to the drainage system, consulted with landowners, and provided additional details to the engineers in order to limit the scope of repair. What the board will hear today from the engineers is a presentation of various repair options, and the board does possess the discretion under the law to determine what option is most appropriate, given the circumstances. It is not required that the board make a decision to reconstruct the ditch to its original constructed configuration or efficiency. Rather, they must balance that desired operation of the ditch with cost and practicality and other factors. In addition, they also have to give consideration to the conservation of soil, water, wetlands, forests, wild animals, and related natural resources, and other public interests affected, together with other material matters as provided by law, which I just described, in determining whether the work will be of public utility, benefit, and welfare. A few things of concern for landowners. Drainage systems in Minnesota are paid for by the lands that are drained to that system or that are determined to be benefited by that system. Several months ago, the county board undertook a redetermination of benefits of County Ditch Number 10, the original benefits being decades old and no longer reflective of the way that properties utilize the ditch as an outlet for beneficial drainage, or no longer reflective of the land values that are sustained by or promoted by the existence of the ditch as an outlet for beneficial drainage. Those determinations of benefits detail each individual land's obligation to the ditch system as a percentage of the total benefits on the ditch. So, for example, if in those proceedings I was determined to be responsible for 1% of costs on the ditch, for every $100 that was spent on the ditch in a repair, for example, I would be obligated to pay a dollar. And so, for this reason, the board has to take into consideration what are the economic impacts of the decision it makes. And as between repair options, it must weigh the utility of each repair option against the impact that that may have on individual landowners. Again, I will stress that staff has worked diligently with landowners adjacent to the ditch and those within the watershed area in order to better inform the engineers in preparing repair options. Following the public comment today, the board has several options. If it feels that the statutory criteria for ordering the repair are met, it may select one or more, or modify, the repair alternatives presented by the engineer and direct that the repair go forward. It may also return the matter to the engineers for further analysis or, or modification of the repair plan. It could also dismiss the action in its entirety. However, if it dismisses the action in its entirety, it will have to either find that the system is not in need of repair or that the repairs are impractical, such that there is no amount of work or no expense that could be expended on the ditch that would be for the benefit of those individual landowners. And I think the board might find and the public might find after hearing from the engineers, the various issues that exist on this ditch that should be corrected if for no other reason to ensure that we are limiting flood damages in the area immediately adjacent to the ditch. Subject, the board may make that decision today, in which case we have a set of findings prepared that the board may modify, or the board may continue the hearing to another date in order to allow for the preparation of findings and an order, and also to respond to any comments that are made during the public comment portion of the hearing. Mr. Chair, members of the board, unless you have any questions of me, I'll be followed by county staff to review the notice, notices given for the hearing today.
Any questions for? Done? Okay. I think Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Notices for this hearing were mailed out to all benefited owners in political subdivisions that are likely to be affected by the repair on January 26. The letters contain the date, time, and location of this hearing as well as an estimate of the cost of repair to the parcel indicated on the notice.
And just let, let you be followed by the engineers, Mr. Chair.
Sorry about that. Turn the microphone on. Darrell Pettis, I'm an engineer from ISG in Mankato, and I'm standing next to Joe Donkers. He's a graduate engineer out of our ISG office in St. Louis Park. We were appointed as engineers about a year ago to look at the condition of Scott County 10, and we have prepared a presentation for your consideration today. This presentation is rather long, so we will try to shorten it up a little bit due to the time constraints with the upcoming county board meeting. So if you have any questions or comments as we move through this, please, please let us know, or we will, we will try to answer those as we move through the presentation. This is our outline. Is there a way to make this so we can do a slideshow? Our outline, who we're talking about today, the process. John Attorney Kolb has gone through legal, legal aspects of it. We'll just stick to the, the engineering part of it here. That's the things we want to talk about as part of our presentation. I think he's going to scroll down. Okay. As Attorney Kolb described, Minnesota Statute 103E is a very detailed legal process. The circles shown in red are circling the triangle or the square on the side there is kind of where we're at right now with the repair report. Our goal is to estimate the cost to repair the system and also to receive feedback from the landowners and the benefited property owners within the system. Here's a timeline. In May of 2001, we were appointed as engineer, and we are here today to prepare, to present the repair report to the Drainage Authority. And then depending on the direction we're given from the Drainage Authority, there's a possibility of preparing plans and specifications for possible construction in summer of 2023. County Ditch 10, it's in Belle Plaine Township, which we've discussed before. It's about 10,000 square acres, 10,000 acres that it does drain. 6,900 of those acres are from Joint Ditch 3, and the remaining 3,000 some acres are from County Ditch 10. There's about 102 feet of elevation difference within the watershed. Soils are CD, which means when they are drained, they are fairly effective and efficient agriculture crop. When they're not drained, they are not particularly well-suited for growing crops. Was established in 1923 as Scott County 10. In 1978, the county board did authorize a full repair and cleanout of the system. And then in 2012, their, the tile on Branch, Branch A of Spur 4 was replaced. During the repair in 1978, there was an improvement petition that was brought forward to deepen and widen three sections of the ditch. Two of those three sections ultimately were constructed just right after the repair was completed, and that completed the full system on Ditch 10. Picture the watershed, as we've said before. 3,342 acres is in County Ditch 10, and then 6,820 acres is in Joint Ditch 3 for combined just over 10,000 acres of drainage. There is a spur and map, branch tile, map that was prepared. There's also copies in the boardroom if anybody would like to grab this. It does involve 42,000 feet of open ditch and 4,000 feet of tile. There's a main, Spur 1, Spur 2, Spur 3, Branch A of Spur 3, Spur 4, and then Branch A and B of Spur 4 also comprising the system. There are 16 culverts within the system.
Just to give a little background, this red line here represents the watershed boundary. These blue lines represent the open ditches. So you have the main, and you have a couple of spurs that go off of that. And then these orange lines with these labels represent the, the 16 culverts, or orange dots represent the 16 culverts within the system.
In 1978, when the system was repaired, the county board did take action and designate the culverts to be the responsibility of the Drainage Authority. Four of the 16 culverts are located in public roads, and we'll briefly be discussing the road authority cost dealing with replacing of culverts that do cross through public roads. Yes, sir?
The slide before that, go back to that one?
Certainly. Thank you.
Is it down in the lower right-hand corner there? You got a spur that's going up there or a branch that's private on it?
Yes.
Is that currently part of the ditch though? It never was before.
That was constructed as part of the improvement proceedings. The county board, it did authorize the construction of a private waterway. We did survey that, and we did indicate that on there. That is more of a legal question, if that's part of the system or not, but it was constructed as part of the 1979, 1980 improvement proceedings.
So why was it not extended up for? Down that, as you can see, there's a ditch obviously going up further. Why was it not extended up?
Why was that not extended up?
As you see, written where that, that branch or that private ditch is there?
Yeah, just for everyone's reference.
Yes, you can see the ditch obviously going up further. Why would you stop at that location when you can obviously see that's a bigger ditch?
If you look throughout the whole other water district, the watershed district, there is no other fingerlings like that. So why would you stop at that road?
The, the waterway was constructed due to the realignment of the, from the improvement to the original system. That's why the waterway was done. I don't know why they didn't go north of the road or cross the road there. I can't answer that, that answer.
Okay. Darrell, John, did you have a comment to make on this?
Mr. Chair, thank you. And just to the gentleman's question, we, we have not investigated the circumstances of the improvement in sufficient detail from 1978, 1979. It is not uncommon that only a portion of existing waterway, if it were converted or brought into the public system, would have been brought into the public system. A lot of it is dependent on what the scope of authority is that the Drainage Authority had at that time, and they would have been limited to whatever was petitioned to them. So if all that was petitioned was to extend that or to create part of the public system to extend north from the main in that regard as it's mapped, that's all that they would have been allowed to do. And what I would suspect is, because I see this all over the state, is that there was some dispute over land ownership between getting the water from that private ditch to the main ditch of the, of the existing County Ditch 10 at that time. And so that that extension was made in order to resolve that conflict, but that the remainder of that open ditch system remained private and subject to the private management of the underlying landowners. So we, bottom line is, sir, we don't know why, but we do know that this is what the record reflects, is that only that small extent was constructed by the Drainage Authority back in 79.
Okay. Hey, Mike, we're getting, I'm getting questions online that they can't hear. So could you come up to the microphones that?
Can you hear me now? Yes, with that private extension there in the lower right, that was cleaned out by the landowner when that was, the landowner, that current landowner that is, that was cleaned out by him. That was all full of trees and everything when he purchased that land. So is that taken into consideration at this point then? Because he cleaned that out, not the county, at that point when that land was bought. So nothing, just because it's cleaned out now, that's the reason you're adding it in? Because it hasn't been done for, within the last five years. Before that, it was full of trees and really growed in. Wasn't even deepened, he deepened the ditch and tiled that whole property, and now all of a sudden it's being part of the ditch? I don't think that's.
Well, it's labeled as private, sir, so I don't know if it's part of the ditch or not. And like I said, we'd have to go back and investigate that. I know that this, that extension of, it's indicated on the map, is not included in any way whatsoever in any of the engineers' recommendations for work.
Well, in the repair, well, online for County Ditch 10, it's given elevations in there, it's given the depths of it and everything. So they spent quite a bit of, a lot of time indicating what that private ditch is. Why would they outline that all in the repair part of it if they weren't considering adding that in? And why wouldn't that just stay green and not have a blue thing there?
We, we, we brought it up to the lenders at the meeting if they wanted anything with it, and that's why we included, just to make sure everyone was aware of the conditions of it and if they want to be, recommend to be back in the system.
And we have no work, we have no work on that part of the system proposed as part of the repair. Moving on?
Yes. Yep, go ahead. Thank you.
As part of our repair report, we also did look at the existing culverts and their capacities out there. As far, as far as drainage work is concerned, there's something called the drainage coefficient. A well-designed, efficient drainage system has a 1-inch per day drainage coefficient. That would assume of 1 inch of runoff per acre of land across the entire acre of land, across the entire watershed flowing to that culvert. That is considered the modern design for drainage systems. As you will note in here, there are three culverts that do not meet the 1-inch drainage coefficient. The first one being the large arch culvert at the outlet of the system, and the other two are further up the system, but those drainage coefficients are generally reduced due to the back grade or the reverse grade on the system. In addition to looking at the drainage coefficients, we also looked at the depth of the culvert, of the flow in the culvert versus the legally established as constructed grade of the system. The culverts that have the numbers shown in red indicate that those culverts currently reside above the legal grade of the system. The ones with negative are actually, negative numbers are actually deeper or lower than the, as constructed and legal grade of the system. So there are three culverts with drainage coefficients, coefficients less than 1 inch per day, and then I think there's nine that have, are above legal grade. One is at legal grade. As we held our landowner meeting in October, we went through all of the crossings with the landowners, and we came up with observations and some recommendations as far as which ones of the culverts we would look at replacing. And we did take those recommendations into account as we put together our repair option. Option number one, the landowner option. We also looked at material types, reinforced concrete pipe versus corrugated metal pipe. Reinforced concrete pipe is more expensive than corrugated metal pipe, but it does have a lower end value, so it is more hydraulically efficient. It's a smoother, smoother slopes you can, smoother pipes, you can push more water through it. I talked a little bit about this before, road authority cost versus landowners' cost. Culverts that cross public roads are the responsibility of the road authority. There's some caveats out there that deal with when the road was established, when the ditch was established. This is a repair, and looking back in the 1923 records, damages actually were awarded to all of the road authorities for culvert or bridge damage. So it was our assumption that the road authorities would be responsible for the cost to replace any of the culverts underneath the four public roads. They are all township roads that are on the system. So those are indicated as road authority costs, not landowner costs. Trees. Trees are a big issue on this system. This is a picture from our drone flight of the outlet. The ditch does meander through there, snake through there. There is quite a thick, dense tree section. We did look at some alternatives for trees. Should we just take them out of the channel? Should we take them out of the channel plus take off each of the buffers on each side, the 16 and a half foot buffer? Or should we try to propose to clean out the entire construction area? When the improvement was done in the 1970s, early 80s, there was a 100-foot easement on each side of the center of the ditch for construction. At the public meeting with the landowners, it was decided that we would look at taking the trees out of the ditch plus the buffer on each side, and then we would bid a alternative to clean the easement area plus an alternative, if the repair goes forward, to look at truck hauling the spoils out of there and then just look, just looking at cleaning the buffer area. So all of the estimates that we presented do include the ditch and the buffer on each side. This is just a little bit of pictures of ditch repair. These are from the main, different sections throughout the, the main. They are in different, varying degrees of repair and disrepair. We did take into account sections of the ditch that were below legal grade that don't need to repair. We did include some repair work to take care of some demanders. And then the section of ditch that were, the spoils in the ditch were above legal grade. That was the full cleanout. We tried to limit the amount of bank work, removing the vegetation off the bank and just tried to limit it to the inverter, the flow line of system, so we don't have to re-vegetate the entire bank unless, so we have sloughs and things like that. Some more pictures of the repair. So these are some of the discussions we had with the landowner meeting. Talked about capacity, side slope, sloughing, and things like that. We did limit that to the greatest extent possible. After a public meeting, we also talked about ASI as alternative side inlets. These are just some pictures of ASIs. These deal with basically taking overland flow, dropping it into an intake, and then providing for a pipe to conduct the flow down into the system to avoid bank cuts and to cut down on future projects. ASIs can be grant-funded. You can get a portion of them paid for with grants. I think we had 11 ASIs figured within the project, and we're working with soil and water and hopefully getting grants for the construction of those. Generally, it's a 75/25. This is just a side picture of the ASIs, and they are effective. We do provide them on a lot of our systems throughout the state. What we have now is just a listing of all the culverts. I will try to fairly quickly go through these. We do have a picture of each culvert, kind of their existing capacity and what we propose to do and what options they would be replaced under. Option number one is what we'll call the landowner option, which is the option was developed at the public input section, session back in December.
Yeah, so just to give you guys an example, we went through each of these, each of these slides with the landowners and really got a good understanding of which ones they thought needed to be replaced. So we had pictures of the current conditions, you know, the crossing, which one it was on the map, which branch it was on, and where it was, the existing drainage capacity as well as the proposed capacity and how much it would cost. And, and by showing them that, they really were able to go through each one of the 16 and decide which ones they thought should be replaced now and which ones they think they could hold off on and, and give their recommendation on what they would like to do.
So culvert one is under option two and three, where it's considered as replacement. Culvert two was considered under option number three. Culvert three was also considered under option number three. Culvert four is to be replaced under options one, two, and three. This is the Galena Avenue crossing. This is the crossing that's about 2.2, 2.3 feet above legal grade. This is causing a, a number of issues with holding back water and obstruction of the drainage system. This is a public road crossing, so this would be a road authority cost. And also, we'd have to work with the township to get this replaced if the township does it themselves or as part of the repair project. This is just a quick picture of cross, or a profile of the existing culvert and then where the new culvert would be placed and elevation. Culvert number five, if you look on the map, this is also replaced under one, two, and three. This is above legal grade, and this has been causing restriction for the drainage system. Culvert number six, placed under option three. Yep, number seven, option number three. Number eight, another road authority cost. Once again, it's above legal grade, option one, two, and three. Culvert number nine, also under one, two, and three. This is in the, this is in the main system. It's also above legal grade. Culvert number 10, this is actually at legal grade. It is a concrete pipe. It's placed under option number three. It's a road authority cost. This pipe's actually in pretty good shape and really doesn't need to be worked on. Number 11, this is an error on our slide right here. This is not replaced under option number one. This is in Spur 1. As we'll get to later, Spur 1, we're not looking at cleaning out. Culvert number 12, one, two, three. 13, also one, two, and three. Culvert 14, one, two, and three. Culvert 15, option one, two, and three. And culvert 16, another road authority cost under one, two, and three. As part of our estimate also, for any culverts that we were not replacing, on option number one, we were going to rip wrap the ends of each pipe, the ones even that were left in place. We would provide some armor, rip wrap to protect the ends of those pipe and cut down on future erosion and maintenance costs. This is just a summary of those culvert costs with the three different options. And then the road authority costs also. Tree removal costs, we talked a little about this before. We'd be taking the trees out of the open ditch section and then off of the buffer, and then we'd be bidding, bid alternatives for cleaning the entire easement area plus bid alternative for truck hauling the spoil out of the system. Picture we have, some pictures of the main branch repair, areas to repair to the main. We anticipate the main to cost about 635,000 to repair. This is, does not include the culverts. This is just the spoils and the ASIs and the cleaning and the erosion control and the reseeding. You will notice in there, the heavy vegetative clearing, the tree removal was 131,000 figured for the outlet and by Galena Avenue for tree clearing. That's what's driving a lot of the cost on this part of the system. That's what's driving a lot of the cost on this part of the system. Spur one, due to a proposed or potential project within spur one for some wetland work, there is no work proposed on spur one. That has been left off of the repair list. Spur two, there's some trees and there's some area of cutting the banks back to a two-to-one slope that has been included in the spur two cost, and that's about $42,000 to repair spur two. Spur three, spur three A, this is one that was kind of left to our discretion from the landowner meeting. There is a tile at the very end of spur three branch A that outlets into the system, that the system is kind of right at the elevation of the existing tile. And some of the culverts are above legal grade, so we did include the repair of spur three and three B and three A as part of the system, but we did not include the tile. Spur four, this is a part of the system that also needs to be repaired. We did include the full repair of spur four. And then also branch A and branch B of spur four were included in the repair, and corresponding culverts on those are also in the repair. Those are the repair costs. We did talk about the ASI, ASROs. This is the locations of the locations of those. Those will help with future maintenance and condition of the system. This is just a picture on the ditch widening. We talked about that on spur two, leveling the bank off for a little bit to get down from one and a half to one to a two-to-one bank. Slough repairs are a couple of slough repairs, but this system's actually in pretty good shape for slough repairs. This is a typical repair we do to repair areas that are sloughing into the system. MDM is required that we discuss as part of a repair report. If you want to talk a little about these, Joe.
Yeah, so for this project specifically, we, as kind of mentioned, we went with the side inlets and the ASIs. There's a bunch of different options, some wetland options that we've talked about with landowners and gotten some positive feedback on for potential.
We did prepare a map for the MDM plan. Most of these are processes and projects that are off of the system, so the drainage authority really doesn't deal with these. This is more of a work for the soil and water, working with landowners and hopefully reducing erosion, sediment, and nitrogen phosphorus and things like that with landowners within the drainage system, and we are required to discuss this as part of the repair. We did look at wetlands also. There is a level one wetland map. The main system, the very beginning of the main system, kind of up in this area, that was not included in the repair due to the presence of a type three, type four wetland up here. So that was left off of the repair also to avoid the impacts on the wetlands. If this project does move forward, we will require wetland permitting from soil and water and the local TEP. Project cost, kind of what we're all interested in. Option number one, landowner cost. We anticipate landowner cost of just over a million dollars, $1,088,839, and then $146,000 in road authority cost. That includes not only construction, but also project administration, bidding, final closeout, plan specs and things like that. That is in that cost. Option number two, which is very similar to option number one, just a couple more culverts we're replacing, $1.2 million with $146,000 also in road authority costs. And then option number three, which would be basically repair the entire system except for spur one, all the culverts, $1.3 million, $1.352. And then $209,000 road authority cost, that would be the fourth culvert for the road authority to replace if they so chose. These are kind of our summaries. This is what we plan and would be planning on doing in the three different options with the costs. Landowner cost, this is a map that was prepared by Scott County GIS, which has been very helpful at the, at the landowner meeting. This, this is available, I believe it is online. If you zoom in and look at this, this is just a typical piece I cut out of there, basically multiply the cost of the project by the percentage that's shown on there, and that would be the amount of cost for each parcel that is out there. And I believe this information was provided as part of the packet from the county to the landowners. With that, our conclusions are, we believe it should be repaired through the process. We are in agreement with the landowners' option, option number one, that looks like a good option, and we would recommend that the board would move forward and then order the repair, which would involve the, the presentation of, or the preparation of formal plan specifications and bidding documents. And this is just some of the bidding requirements. Since it is over $175,000, it is required to be a public bid, just like a highway project would be, and it is run, a contract administration, we run through our office and then working with the county, and then there would be a final, there'd be a couple of hearings coming up as far as awarding the bid and also a final hearing as when the project is done. So it's kind of where we're at. We've seen this before, and that's our presentation, sorry about the brevity, given the shortness of it, but try to get through as quick as we can. With that, I will take any questions from the board, comments that they would have.
Yes. Is there any questions that comes from the board? And if not, this is, we're going to open a public hearing here.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you to open the public hearing?
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this is an open public hearing. If you have something to say, go right up to the podium. Yep, Myron, go on your.
Question I have is, is.
Mr. Chair, can we have my.
Jim Glazinski. Yep. The question I have is, would these culverts be new culverts that they want to put in or are the old ones just lowered down or whatever?
We would propose replacing the culverts with new culverts.
Okay.
Yeah, within that, some of them would be concrete and some of them would be our CMP as well.
I am Myron Bratch. My wife Teresa and I live at 8116 Union Hill Boulevard and 8246 is another property of Union Hill Boulevard. We're in sections 14 and 15 on your map. I guess my question to the board is with this. We received a letter last fall, all the landowners did, with the value for the engineering costs and the, whatever cost for as far as the level of maintenance was going to be for the future. There's kind of being kind of vague here with how much the cost was actually going to be. We just get a value of what that value is, but there's no math to it. Okay, I understand, we never got the percentage. We got it in writing here, but we never actually got a map where he showed the percentage of what each property had for that in our packet, like he stated. We never got that in our packet. We got it in words, but we never got no map, for one thing. And we'd like to see, we have other properties too. In, within that, you have yellow areas, you have red areas, you have blue areas, and you have green areas. You've got a total percentage there, but what percentage is in the blue area, which is in the yellow area, which is in the green area, which is in the red area? What percentage does that go in the total cost of that? And as I would, I've talked to a number of other landowners within this watershed, and I think it should be more clarified to, we should be able to see everyone's cost for this watershed district. Why should we not, if you're not trying to be, trying to be clarifying this and being clear about this, it's rather trying to be rather vague with trying to just give, just what you owe. And I've talked to other people too, and they've never heard of actual cost to the landowner. You gave a percentage and you gave an estimate, but the actual cost to the landowner until we got those letters, we had no idea. I mean, if we'd have known that, say, we're going to get $40,000 assessed upfront, we'd have been at all these meetings saying, what are we doing here, all this stuff? Why isn't county people looking at this to see that? Why are we spending so much money? This is going to be doubling people's taxes for sure when you look at this. And is that fair? And I guess that another part of this also is that in today's world, we had so much of this stuff, George Floyd money being spent downtown Minneapolis and everything. That was all grant money, free taxpayer money paying for that. That's all big in the media and all that stuff. Why isn't any of that money being brought down from the American Rescue Plan to address issues like this? Why, was there any plans on trying to get any money for a watershed district in Scott County? Probably not, because we're not in the media. Why was that not applied for there? And this has not been, nothing been done for 40 years, just a little bit of clean out and everything like that. Why are we in such a rush right now to get this all cleaned out? Can't we do this in stages and everything too, so it's not such a big tax burden? Because you're looking at putting this on 20 years on our taxes at 6% interest. The one last fall, my wife and I put it on a 3% equity loan. Why would we want to go 6% when we can get an equity loan for 3.7% at the county for 20 years? So instead of like, you've got, see if you're going to base it for $10,000, over 20 years, you're going to be paying $22,000 for that same project. So I think there's a lot of costs here that we weren't being told about upfront. There's a lot of vague being, oh, this is what you could be charged, but there's nothing that actually came down to brass tacks. This is what you're actually going to be, if you have a $1 million, $1 million project, this is what you can see to be assessed to your property. This is in the yellow area, this is in the green area, this is in the red area. And I would like to see a map, as you see there, of all the property owners, and this much is for the yellow area, this is much for the green area, for the red area and the blue area, and have a total for each landowner within that watershed district, so we all can see it. I mean, it's kind of being vague for a reason, because you don't want us, it seems like we don't want us to know what's going on here. Why can't we have more clarity? I asked for the, clarifying the math. I was told it's in our packet. There's nowhere in this packet here that shows those two letters' value percentage-wise, what it's going to be spilled out on that letter of time on one of my taxes. If you can find it in this packet to exactly what that is percentage-wise, I'd like them to prove that to me, because we are not given the information for the total value of what we are being assessed. And I think there should be a lot more clarifying here. Why can't we see the math? We're just told to pay this amount, but yet we can't see the math, how it came about? Yeah, you show us the percentage, but percentage of what? Of the total project? But we had different levels of what it was going to be repaired at, but we don't get to see the levels. And why don't you put in there, we have roads within our property and everything like that. Why don't you have that listed as being excluded from our land value? We don't see that, how much the roads are in our property taken out for the right-of-way. That's not included in that. It just says this much is excluded. And like in my property, we have 80 acres, and we're being assessed for 77 point, some acres of benefit land. I thought you were excluding the wetlands and excluding the buildings. How is that going to be only 2.7 acres of a building site then? So it's not very clear on how this all was come about, and not fair either. And what I'm saying is, I see, you say ISG is doing all this stuff. Who at the county is responsible for looking out for us landowners with this project? Who was responsible for signing off, saying this is correct, this has all been done? If you look at this book that he gave us, you take a magnifying glass and you can barely see the lettering in the back. And you expect people, landowners, to be able to see that and interpret that? Who at the county was making sure this was done properly and signed off on it? And I think, but for that issue that I brought up at first, if it says private ditch on it, keep it private. Exclude that from any future privates. They said it's private ditch, don't list it as blue, as being part of the project. It should stay private. Because I can see that being just included, because all your maps you're showing, you're showing that it's being part of the ditch from future, all future stuff. So keep that private. So as far as, I'd like to have response from the board. Who is responsible at the county level for approving all of this, saying that it's correct and fair to all its property owners?
Okay, thank you, Myron. I don't know if Darryl, do you want to take that, or John, or?
Mr. Chair, if, if I could, sir, your last name again? Okay. Mr. Chair, members of the board, so much of what Mr. Bratch was talking about is part of the redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 10. In fact, the packet that he's holding, that he was talking about the different colors of lands, those are land classifications as determined by viewers in those proceedings. So when the viewers go out and they do the redetermination of benefits, for those of you that were present at that hearing, you will have seen how the viewers take what they call a GIS sandwich, and they take a parcel of land and they pull off the public roads, and they, they separate out the wood-lotted areas from the home area, from the homeside area. They take the various agricultural properties and they classify them in one of four categories based on a number of issues, a number of items, including soil type, type of productivity, proximity to the ditch, slopes, those sorts of things. And so they come up with these different land classes, and then each land class, they do an economic calculation to say, how is that land benefited by the drainage system? That's all rolled into a report, and part of that report includes the, the map that the individual landowners get and the packet that Mr. Bratch was, was, was talking about in his comments. We do not separate out an assessment by land class. We use those land classes to create an aggregated benefit for each individual parcel. And then for individuals that own multiple parcels, then those multiple parcels are aggregated into a total amount of benefits that, that that owner of those parcels is obligated for, for, to the ditch. So if we have a million dollars of benefits and you have $100,000 of individual benefits, you would have 10% of the total benefits, which means, again, if we spend a million dollars, you would be assessed $100,000. Now, I'm not saying that's your numbers, but that's just how it works. The availability of everyone else's benefits, that's all public data, and that's maintained by the auditor's office. So if Mr. Bratch wants to see what his neighbor's percent of benefits are, or what his, how his land was classified or broken down, those maps breaking down by land classifications were provided to the county auditor's office. I believe the county recorder might actually have them as well to facilitate land splits. So all of this information is available. If Mr. Bratch wants to go and meet with the auditor and look at the benefits rule, he or any other member of the public could see each individual property owner's benefits, each individual parcel benefit, and then if they wanted to dig deeper into that data that's available publicly, they could look at their neighbor's property and see how the land classifications were determined on the neighboring property or their own property, for that matter. So all of that is, is available, and there is no, nobody's trying to hide anything. We're trying to, when we make a presentation, we try to make the presentation in a way that we think is easily understandable, because if I tell you your benefits are $500, that doesn't mean anything unless you know how that $500 sits in relation to the total benefits on the system. That might be only 1/10th of 1% of the total benefits, which then again equates into how much that individual property would be obligated to if the cost were moved forward. Secondly, as to the transparency of costs, we don't know what those costs are truly until a contract is awarded for the work. So the engineers can estimate that the project work under option one is going to cost approximately $1.2 million, but those bids may come in 10% over that estimate. They may come in 20% under that estimate. And then it's based on that estimate and the total aggregation of costs that then the board and the auditor has to certify assessments. Regarding the costs of those assessments, the drainage code requires you, if you extend an assessment over a period of more than one year, it requires you to impose interest. It requires a minimum interest. That minimum interest is the judgment rate of interest, which is currently around 4%. And so typically what a drainage authority will have to do in order to carry that debt forward, because it's basically covering those costs while those assessments catch up, is it will impose the statutory minimum interest of 4%, but it might put a percent or two over that to cover just the administrative costs of administering those assessments over a number of years. It might add a percent to cover the risk of non-payment or late payment by various landowners. So there's a, there's a, it's a complicated process that occurs within your auditor's office, and of course, it's further complicated by the fact that you have to make the policy decisions to tax your residents. As to outside sources of, of revenue to support the drainage systems, as the engineers noted, there are certain aspects of drainage system work that are grant-eligible. So mostly on the ecological side of things. So those are alternative side inlets, for example, those are known to reduce sedimentation in the ditch and downstream areas beyond the drainage system. Those are grant-eligible. The fundamental drainage work itself, however, under, under the various state grant programs, are not grant-eligible, and the state statute presumes that the drainage system will be paid for by those lands that are utilizing the drainage system and determined to be benefited by the drainage system. So a couple of things we can, we can address today for Mr. Bratch that is, that it, that are relevant to today's proceedings is scope of repair, timing for assessments if it goes forward. But as to the redetermination of benefits and individual property benefits on this system, those were determined some months ago through a public proceeding that everyone got notice of. The gentleman obviously got his packet, so he knew as to his benefits, what his benefits were. He got his property owner's report. And I believe that the notice of that hearing also made available for inspection, the full viewer's report and everything else. So I can't speak to whether or not any member of the public took advantage of the opportunity to go and look at that public data, but I do know that it is available and it can be looked at. And at any landowner on this system can look at the total benefits rule and understand what the benefits are to their neighboring properties, and then how their individual benefits factor into the total benefits that were determined on the system. Again, this is about the repair, and this is about whether the repair is necessary, meaning that there are deteriorations in the drainage system that reduce its hydrological efficiency from its original construction. And then second, whether those other environmental and ecological factors are being considered as part of the repair, which has been discussed by the engineer. And then whether are means to limit the scope of repair in order to do the minimum necessary in order to meet your statutory requirement to keep the drainage system in a state of repair. So those are the only things that I can comment on as to the gentleman's comments or respond to as to the gentleman's comments. But again, I think that his comments primarily are directed at the redetermination of benefits and how those benefits are distributed within the watershed area of County Ditch 10, and not going directly to the need for or necessity of the repair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna follow up on one thing that Myron asked. I don't think that Mr. Colb responded to. It was the five of us, well, not Commissioner Brennan, Commissioner Beard in her place, who were the people who accepted that redetermination of benefits after all the presentations and the meetings and the reports. So I just didn't wanna not answer that question, that who at the county did it? Ultimately, we did. And we did that back in the fall. And we didn't have these costs then, because we needed to do that before we could go get that estimate. And that's what we're here today to talk about, is should we go forward with this or not? And so just didn't wanna not answer the question, because the buck has to stop here.
Mr. Chair, before Ms. Bratch makes her comment, I think too, it's important to note that this wasn't initiated on the whim of the county board. This was initiated by a landowner petition. Landowners, more than one landowner, came to the county board saying, there are portions of County Ditch 10 that aren't working properly. We would like you to investigate the conditions on Ditch 10 and determine whether or not a repair is necessary. And that triggers a statutory process, which the county board is obligated to follow. So the petition came in, that resulted in the appointment of an engineer to work with county staff to investigate the conditions on the ditch and to determine where and what aspects of the ditch were not functioning properly or according to that established hydraulic efficiency. So this wasn't something, even though the county board has to make the decisions here and the buck does stop with the county board, as Commissioner noted, this was not something that the board just decided on a whim. But it was petitioned by landowners who were affected by Ditch 10 that have the privilege, under the Drainage Code, to petition for this action, which then in turn obligates the board to conduct the investigation and hold these proceedings.
So John, can I just, for people viewing, why would somebody do that? Was there a couple of big reasons? Was it blocking up? Because if they petitioned, they certainly knew that this could cost them money, correct?
I believe that would be correct. They would know that nothing in life is free.
Yep.
But I think that what likely happens is, landowners over a course of time see changes in the productivity and the ability to use their land productively and to access the drainage system as efficient means of outlet for their agricultural drainage. When those systems start to not work properly, they start working inefficiently, landowners typically see that in their field. And the first place they look is they look at their internal drainage to see, is my system working properly? And then they look downstream to say, is my system obstructed in some way? And I believe that is the motivation for the petitions. Petitioners might be in the room today, I wouldn't blame them for not identifying themselves. But that's probably what they experienced, and that is the most likely reason why people petition for a repair.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Bratch. Thank you for the answers to the questions thus far. I understand that we all have to live on this earth and make things work for the best of everyone. And repairs and improvements are needed. But I strongly question the 6%. That's a jeopardy to interest rate for any family to have to pay when it could be 4. That's something we could all work with. And did we address the question of partial process, or partial? Yes, thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you.
This project can be parceled out and built in stages. It's definitely an option. Keep in mind, though, that every time a project is put together and that project is estimated to be in excess of $175,000, which is your public bid statute, you have to go through a public bidding process to do it, which means advertising and bidding, and also contract administration, us having people out in the field. The longer you stretch these projects out, the, basically, the more overhead gets lumped onto them. Every time you have a contractor's cost of putting that together. There's costs for specifications, for advertising, things like that. Yes, definitely, you can definitely put this together. We've done many projects where we've done pieces after pieces after pieces. But it generally tends to cost more over time. But that is definitely an option that is available to the board and to the landowners, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bratch. I thought I saw someone else over here that wanted to speak.
Oh, yeah.
Come on up.
Jim Jerrison, Bell Plain Township, Section 17. My question is, Myron brought up the private ditch. Can you clarify the private ditch? It can be a private ditch, but is it still part of the watershed?
The answer to Mr. Jerrison's question, Mr. Chairman, is yes. All of the lands that flow and utilize Ditch 10 as an outlet are included in the watershed of the ditch. They were all considered by the viewers in the redetermination of benefits. Some of those lands were determined not to be benefited. Some of them were, some of them were determined to be benefited to a lesser extent than others, depending on proximity to the ditch and how they access the ditch. But even though there are many private drainage systems within the drainage area that flows to and utilizes Ditch 10 as an outlet, they are not considered part of the public system. And so those are the responsibility of individual landowners to maintain.
Thank you. Myron, you had a question? You wanna come?
Yeah, come on.
Come on.
Yeah, I'm Myron Bratch. I'm the treasurer for Bell Plain Township. And I'm looking at all this road authority costs. I do, I've been the treasurer for over 10 years. We've never got assessed for any road right-of-way, for any watershed district of all. As far as I can look back and look at the records, Bell Plain Township was never assessed for any type of watershed district costs as far as this project is concerned. And we're looking at $146,000 as a little township for Bell Plain Township. You said we have, we may have the choice of not doing it through this project or doing it on our own. I can tell you, I'm gonna suggest to the supervisors that we don't do it now. We'll do it on our own and do it at a future time. Because $146,000, our budget right now is $300,000 for the whole year. That includes everything. And you're looking at adding $146,000 onto a little township like this for this, and it's gonna be done right now. That's future burden on all the taxpayers of Bell Plain Township. I'm gonna have to increase the levy, double it. Is that fair? I see most levies, people are complaining at 5%. It's gonna have to be 100%. I just don't agree that the township should be at the burden of this. It should have been included into the cost. And like I said, you can't tell me that all that land down in George Floyd projects downtown Minneapolis, that was not for grant money and all this and that eligible for that. You can't tell me that this watershed district, yes, there's a state statute. But there's no way that that American Rescue Plan money couldn't have been applied for to be this infrastructure. They're talking infrastructure in the bills. They're talking, oh, look at our infrastructure, we need all this money, we're sticking towards infrastructure. This is part of infrastructure. Watershed is infrastructure. Why aren't we getting some federal money or American Rescue Plan money to pay for this? Yes, there's a state statute, but you can't tell me there wasn't a state statute saying you couldn't have private stuff being done for a grant downtown Minneapolis. And come on now, I understand the words, but, and that whole, the whole thing that's grant for ISJ stuff, that's minimal. I mean, you're looking at this whole project, that's gonna be maybe $30,000, $40,000 of a grant for that type of stuff, tops. You can't be telling me that that part is eligible. That's minimal as far as this is concerned. And as far as, like Jim was saying, that ditch is being part of the watershed, that is good. But you look at this map here, it looks like it's gonna be part of the future ditch. Get rid of the blue lines, change the map, so that's not part of the main ditch line or spur or anything like that. Because I can see that being not private. It's such small letters in all the documentation we got, that I can see that being routed into it and then that being part of the future cleanout and everything. So please leave that off the main project. Leave it private.
Mr. Chair, I think there was a request to show that it was private. So other landowners had different requests about, well, what about that ditch? And that's why it's shown, and that's why it's private. So I think I get your point, but I'm just saying, there's other people out there who had a different point, who are also your neighbors.
Mr. Chair, could I comment on, I guess we'll call him Supervisor Bratch's, or Treasurer Bratch's comments regarding the road? So I wanna just cite statute, and he can write this down perhaps, because it'll be helpful to him as he goes back to explain to his town board what the requirement might be. So this is from Statute Section 103 E.525, which is part of the Drainage Code. Again, 103 E.525. And it says, "Bridges and culverts on public roads must be constructed and maintained by the road authority responsible for keeping the road in repair." And then it talks about the process by which the road authority is given, to be given notice of the requirement, a timeline by which the requirement has to be fulfilled, and the option of if they don't wanna do it themselves, according to the timeline that's given to them, that then the drainage authority can do it and charge those costs back to the road authority. So there is some flexibility on this for both the township and the drainage authority. There is a statutory process laid out, again, in 103 E.525. But it's not an issue where if the drainage authority determines that the culvert needs to be replaced, that the township can just sit on it for a period of time until it's convenient to them to repair, to replace it. It should be done on a reasonable timeline in conjunction with the work that's being performed to maintain the system. So there are some limitations on that, but there is a little bit of flexibility as well. And so certainly, the drainage authority, the county board in this case, working through its staff, could work with the road authorities on a timeline that made sense. The other thing that I will say is that, as the engineer pointed out, in '78, all of the road authorities were paid damages for the crossings. And this is a key component of the Drainage Code, which is once that drainage authority has been paid, road authority, I'm sorry, has been paid a damage for that crossing, then the obligation to maintain is vested with them. And so if the culvert is determined to be out of repair, deteriorating, maybe reaching the end of its service life, or that it's been installed at a wrong elevation, wrong grade, or wrong size, there's also a hydraulic capacity component of the statute, then it is required to be replaced, and it is at the road authority's expense. So I wanna be sensitive to the fact, especially in townships, that they have their annual meeting, at their annual meeting, their electors have to approve their budget. These culvert or bridge replacements were probably not in their budget. But they're also not something that's subject to a lot of negotiation by the road authority. They have this obligation. And so we can certainly find ways to work with the road authorities to maybe balance out or level out that burden, which I'm sure is unbudgeted and unanticipated. But now you know about it. And you also probably know that there's other bridges and culverts on other public drainage systems, maybe, in the township. And so some planning can take place now. And a lot of this just has to do with what is the institutional memory? And there's a lot to keep track of in local government, especially if you're a road authority. So I'm sympathetic to that, and I think that the county board certainly is as well. And we can certainly work with the road authorities to try to come up with a timeline that is reasonable and corresponds to the needs of the drainage system if a repair is ordered.
Anyone else like to speak? Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I received a phone call that I need just to bring up and to have put on the record. And I did discuss this already with Mr. Colb, so he can respond. I received a call from Joe O'Brien, and he lives at 18781 Naylor Avenue. And his request was that he would like to see if it's possible that we would request XL Energy to help cover some of the cost of this repair, because they have towers on some of the land that's benefited by Ditch 10. Thank you.
Mr. Colb, is that a possibility, or is that not?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, at this point, it's not a possibility, only because the redetermination is complete. There are provisions in the Drainage Code which would allow viewers to look at easement interests and utility interests and determine a benefit to them. Transmission towers are unique inasmuch as sometimes they occupy an easement. Sometimes they are subject to some kind of licensing fee or other arrangement with the underlying landowner. And those property transactions or those interests are very difficult for viewers to discover and often more expensive for them to try to figure out than it would be to just ignore them outright. Now, as to transmission towers themselves, especially in this part of the state, most of them exist within easements. Most of them, the tower footprints, damages were paid to the landowners at the time the towers were put in. And in subsequent transactions, they have influenced the price of the transaction. And so at least as to major transmission lines and the towers thereon, it is not the typical practice in the state that viewers determine a benefit specific to those tower locations. And they believe that the market for the transaction in lands accounts for any difference in value because that tower is present. But there are instances in the state as well where other utility companies, pipeline companies and others are determined to be benefited based on their easement interests in certain lands. That was not done here, I think, for fair reason. And there's no, unless we reopen the redetermination of benefits proceedings, which would be, in my opinion, unnecessary cost of the drainage system, I don't believe we'd be able to address potential benefits to the utility company at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? I see Jim.
Jim Jerrison, again, one of the big issues with this project is the lack of attention to the trees in County Ditch 10 over the years. And Darryl, help me out, what's, what was it, around $200,000?
$200,000, yeah.
$200,000 of the cost this project is for tree removal. And it's been hinted here a couple of times of maybe looking for outside money anywhere. Is that something that the board could look into, maybe help out the cost of this project?
Leslie, you got that?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jerrison, I do believe that the county is actively Troy through the SWCD. Vanessa with the WMO is exploring, are there some potential funds that could bring down the overall cost of the project? I also believe that the county could work with the township, similar to we do other road projects, to work with them on a timeframe of repayment, very similar to how we do some of that as well. So I think, per the attorney, there are some things that we can do there to work with them, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Leslie, could you help us understand the reply to Mrs. Bratch's question about, and I apologize, I should know this, do we set that type of interest rate annually? I know statutorily, 4%, around 4% minimum, but then how do we set that?
I'm gonna ask Cindy to please address that, because she is the auditor, is the one that...
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we actually included that in the resolution when we did the redetermination of benefits. Of course, this proceeding, none of that has even been discussed, because you're not looking at assessing these costs at this time. This, the, this issue on the repair won't come before you until the repairs are completed and we know what the total amount is. And then we'll be bringing, be bringing forward to you a resolution, setting the costs, and then the assessment role to be submitted out. But when the, when the redetermination of benefits were done, there was that interest rate... But when the, when the redetermination of benefits were done, there was that interest rate located, included it within the packet that you received at that time. So we do it on a case by case at this.
So we could set a different interest rate when we order these costs to be assessed. Right now, we're talking about, should we order the repairs estimated at this cost? We're not even sure it could come in lower or higher, and if we got no other outside funding, we estimate this is how much each landowner would be paying.
Mr. Chair, members, that is correct.
Mr. Chair. While, while Mr. Bratch is getting up to the podium, two items. So to Mr. Jerson's question, there may possibly be external funds that would be available to defray some of the expenses on this drainage system. Typically, they are not available for the actual drainage work itself, but for ancillary work. If the board were to determine that it was less than proactive in the inspection and maintenance of ditch ten, and that has caused some increased expenses related to tree removal or other items, it is within the discretion of the county board to defray some of those expenses. But that leaves then the county board with a difficult choice of, do we ask everyone else in the county to pay for something that is by statute primarily benefiting this discrete number of landowners and by statute is intended to be paid for by the discrete number of landowners? But I don't want to foreclose the fact, or foreclose the option that you have because you do have the discretion to do that. And then lastly, I believe that the county auditor's office also has the option, whether they've exercised it or not, of providing advance notice to all landowners of their potential assessment and allowing them to prepay it in order to avoid the interest or at least portions of the interest. And of course, assessments of this type can be prepaid at any time. And then the, the second, the second part of that comes down to if the district would have, or if the county would have to bond for the cost of this project, then of course you have a debt service component of that that you have to accommodate as well, which also influences some of your decisions on what type of interest rate to charge as well.
Okay, thank you.
Myron Bratch, I'm talking as the treasurer for Belle Plaine Township. I think it's at your discretion, as, as he has said, and also in the proceedings here, is it's at your discretion to, maybe you can approve this ditch project, but what's the problem with you reopening the redetermination of benefits at this time? It's gonna cost maybe fifty thousand dollars on a project that's a million dollars. Why wouldn't you go ahead and do that so that you could get it, looking at it to be someplace that might be less than others? Be more fair to all the landowners so they can see what their benefit is at this point? Because I can tell you, a lot of people were at the other meetings and they wanted to have their classification changed. I talked to a number of them and they were, fell on deaf ears, just like, no, how many determinations were switched? When they had that meetings, how many were switched?
Do you have that data?
I don't have the speci, Mr. Chair, I don't have the specific data, but I do know that after landowner meetings, the viewers did file amended reports and they did adjust some of those benefits. The majority of those adjustments occurred at the edge of the watershed area of the drainage system, where landowners were able to demonstrate that their land either was tiled or drained in a different direction other than toward County Ditch Ten. I don't believe that any landowners provided any specific information to viewers that would have changed their land classification. I think there were some acres that were removed from the benefits role based on enrollment in certain permanent programs and restoration to pre-settlement conditions. Again, those were, those were very limited circumstances. Why you might consider reopening or not reopening the redetermination of benefits really has to do with whether or not that additional fifty thousand dollars results in any appreciable change. Again, the, the, the current benefits role is available for anyone to go and look at and inspect. And so we can tell whose property has benefited in what way and what their total percentage of benefits are by looking at those documents. You can also see how many acres of each land classification type they have. That's all available through the auditor's office. So reopening the redetermination of benefits does nothing to lend to that transparency. And again, even if it costs fifty thousand dollars, if it costs fifty thousand dollars and caused no appreciable change in the distribution of benefits or the total benefits, that may not be the wisest use of the drainage system's money, because again, the drainage system would have to pay those costs.
Thank you, John. Myron, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I have a little follow up too. When we have assessments like this, see if it's a street improvement or if it's any other, you know, see if you're in city sewer and stuff like that. We have meetings up ahead of time that it says, this is how many feet of frontage you have on this project. We, like, when we had something in Belle Plaine Township, we told the landowners, this is how much you expect to pay. You have a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage on this, on this project. This is what our estimate is. I understand you don't know what it is, but you can't tell me that you didn't know that this was gonna be a million dollar project. You could have came out in front of it, it's a million dollar project, you have this much accountability for you. This is what you should pay as a landowner. I don't think any of us landowners got that repo, repo from the, from the county saying that that was be, we didn't have a meeting that we could come and say, how much are we gonna get assessed for this? I mean, we had that at Belle Plaine Township and it was a number thing. And another thing with the projects, the way a lot of these projects work, that the, the engineers and firm and rather they charge twenty-five percent of the project and stuff like this. I would like to see Scott, Soylent Water or something looking at that and doing it as per hour percentage wise, not as a project total. Because in Belle Plaine Township, we had engineers coming through and saying, this is what our project's gonna cost. We had a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar project that we went down and did it per hour. How they're gonna do it, it costs us fifty-five thousand dollars. Same work, same project, we just made them charge out their hours versus being a project total thing. So I think it'd be benefit for the county to have someone on staff or so, Scott, Soylent Water to overlook this to, so that some outside vendor is not doing all the work here and we're paying a lot inflated price for that. It's just that I think we have a lot of county staff, why can't we have that type of stuff? I understand you made the decision here for all these determinations, but didn't Scott, Soylent Water see any of this? Didn't the Farm Service Agency see any of this? And look at the discrepancies between their maps and this map? I know of one landowner where just above me put in a water feature, that no water would ever get to the drainage system. Yet he was taxed twenty-four acres being in the watershed. None of his water is ever gonna get to this watershed district, and he wanted to get his determined, said, no. That can go away after fifteen, twenty years according to the county, so you could bring that back to something else. Well, that'd be like saying, well, you could bring that back, but you have a house of two hundred thousand dollars that you built. You have the potential to build a house of a million dollar house. We're gonna tax you on that million dollar house because you had the potential to build that million dollar house, not the two hundred thousand dollar one that you built. So that's the type of stuff that we need to have someone at the county. I know you're not versed in all of the proceedings as far as determinations and all that, but we should have had someone at Scott, Soylent Water or the Farm Service Agency looking over these things, saying, yes, these are all correct. I looked over every parcel, it is correct. Did you get that information from your sub-organizations? That's my question to the, to the council.
I mean, I can answer, for any data that the federal government has, we don't have access to it. It's all governed by the Privacy Act, and unless the individual landowners involved sign a waiver, neither the engineers, the viewers nor the county board can access that information. And if we put a request in for the Farm Service Agency to review this or the Natural Resource Conservation Service, any entity of the USDA to look at it, I know that their prior answer has been, no, we won't do it. That's individual landowners, that's Privacy Act data. So that's kind of comment one on those pieces of it. I will, in defense of the Soil and Water Conservation District and county staff, say that the reason why you have before you a one million dollar project versus a one point three million dollar project is because staff and the SWCD staff in particular scrutinized and were very critical of the original engineer's report in this instance, and took the extra step of sitting down and talking to the individual landowners within the area, not everybody. Okay, so if you didn't get contacted, don't call me a liar. But they sat down and they talked to individual landowners to assess the actual need of each and every item of work that the engineers were recommending. And they were able to actually get rid of a fair number of the open ditch work. They were able to determine which, which culverts or crossings were a higher priority than others, which could, which could wait. I mean, again, if you're talking about something that's six inches high and the right size versus something that's two feet high and the wrong size, clearly you're gonna wanna address the one that's two feet high and the wrong size. And that's the kind of work that your SWCD and your county staff did and the type of hoops that they required the engineers to jump through in order to try to capture or try to rein in the costs on this. I don't disagree with you, and my engineering friends over there will be not happy to hear me say this, but I'm skeptical because if they're working on a percentage of the total project cost, they have no motivation to have it come in cheaper. Your county staff did have that motivation, by the way, and your county staff did go through the extra effort of pushing the engineers to say, what if you don't do that? Tell me why that's necessary. Those are the exact questions they asked. And that's why this thing has come now to be presented to the county board as essentially a one million dollar project estimated as opposed to a one point three million dollar project estimated. And, and that's the, reflected in the comparison between options one, two, and three, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, John. There is somebody online that's been waiting a while. Greg asks if you wanna unmute, I believe? Greg, online? Okay, oh, there you are. Can't hear you, unmute.
He is unmuted.
No. Greg, we can't hear you.
I'll let them, they're working right up there.
I'm trying to get you, so we can hear you here, Greg. Speaker.
Okay. We have a chat?
We can hear you now.
Greg, could you start?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, a couple of little things I just wanted to bring up on, I know there's talk of the redetermination and, and such. You know, it sounded like perhaps, well, the concern that was brought up was that something was missed when the redetermination took place. You know, it sounds to me, would, you know, in terms of the engineering company, would they be on the hook to, let's say, correct their work versus opening this, you know, opening it up to additional cost? If there was something missed?
Mr. Chair, members of the board and gentlemen on the, online, thank you for the question. So first of all, the, the redetermination of benefits is conducted by viewers and not by the engineers. So it's not an issue of the engineers correcting an error. The viewers, after conducting their work and conducting the public comment and public input process related to the redetermination of benefits, tried to address all those issues that were raised. If an error was made in the redetermination of benefits, and, and again, I have not heard specific evidence about a specific error, just a difference of opinion on how benefits should be treated, the, we can certainly work at correcting that error. And that may or may not require the reopening or the reinitiation of a redetermination of benefits process. But also available to the landowners and the landowner in Mr. Bratch's example in particular, if they have constructed permanent and permanently restricted facilities on their property that prevent that property from utilizing ditch ten as an outlet for beneficial drainage, they can petition under the drainage code to have that property removed from the benefits role. And then they can, they can have it taken out. That does not require a redetermination of benefits, and it is a parcel specific consideration. But as to temporary programs that the landowner has received financial assistance to install or may actually be receiving a annual payment to maintain for the period of their contract, that is a management decision by the landowner. It's not a permanent restriction. It does create income production. It is partially related on the fact that, related to the fact that the land has been previously drained, which is likely facilitated by the existence of, of ditch ten. And so again, the viewers, when they look at that, they consider that a temporary management decision that can be pulled out and that land could be placed back into production. But again, if the landowner has modified their land to prevent it from draining to the ditch, that it's permanently restricted, so it can't be restored or put back into a condition where it can utilize the ditches and outlet for drainage, then that property can be petitioned for removal from the benefits role.
Okay, well, thank you for that. One other question, I guess I had, had to do more with, you know, looking ahead. I know the number, I've been at my property for eight years now, and we've had about three different assessments in that time. And now with the most recent one we're looking at, I guess, looking ahead, is there any idea as to what we could expect after this project in terms of if there'll be less, you know, less assessments moving forward because of this project? Or is there any idea what that schedule might look like?
Mr. Chair, if I could, and sir, again, thank you for that question. I, I am very hesitant to ever say there will never be a future cost, because there's always gonna be future costs. But when you do a major restoration or major repair on a ditch system, there is a one-time cost and then there's a life cycle to that repair. And I believe that a lot of the angst that we hear in the room today is based on the fact that there was a major repair forty years ago and it's now time for another one. And, and so the, the drainage authority has a couple of options. It can do very proactive maintenance program where it goes out every few years and does a little bit of work, and that's gonna sprinkle costs over the course of those years. Those costs have to be assessed. So you could have year after year, a low level of assessment after this work is done. And then maybe it just sustains like that in perpetuity because minor maintenance is occurring on a regular and routine basis. Or you could spend this once, wait two generations, and then spend it again as you reconstruct the ditch in another forty years. And, and I see that repeating itself over and over again across the state. And it really, again, is at the discretion of the drainage authority in terms of how it wants to manage that. The only requirement the drainage authority has is to inspect open ditches once every five years and conduct reasonable and routine maintenance. But I always use the analogy of a water system in a city. You don't replace the pipes in the water system every year. You wait until everybody's complaining because so much scale has, has accumulated in the water line that they can't take a shower in the morning. And then, of course, you're left with huge expenses of replacing all of those water lines. So we take a similar approach to public drainage systems. You have ongoing maintenance, you have routine inspections, and then you just accept as, as fact that probably about every forty or fifty years, you're gonna have to reconstruct major components of that system and it's gonna be at, at added expense. So to, to the gentleman's comment, we can never guarantee that there won't be an assessment, but we do know that drainage systems usually operate on a life cycle. And the only way to get in the middle of that life cycle would be to have an ongoing proactive maintenance program where you're doing a little bit of maintenance on every ditch every year, which means there's a little bit of an assessment every year on every ditch. And I can't tell you what the best option is.
Sure. Yeah, and my only reason for asking is that obviously we're all looking at quite a, quite a cost here and we're all gonna have to try to figure out the best route for us, whether that's trying to pull money out of retirement accounts or take out a home equity line of credit or, or take on the, the payment scale that the county has available. And, you know, part of that equation, you know, like for me, I'm, I'm on the hook for over sixteen grand on this one. And, you know, part of what I'm looking at is, well, okay, I'll have this. Now, looking ahead, is it gonna be another assessment? Like, to your point, like, if it's reviewed at once every five years, is that a once every five year thing and what that might look like? And that's the only reason for my question. I know no one has a crystal ball, but just to, as a, as a landowner here, that's, again, trying to kind of plan for the future, because this is definitely not an expense that, you know, unfortunately, I had in mind when, you know, we, we moved out here and looking at what we've got. And it is what it is. It's like, it's, it's been brought up before that it needs maintenance and that's okay. But again, just trying to look at it from a financial standpoint of how can myself and my family afford this long term? my family afford this long-term?
Okay, thank you, Greg, and I think, Cindy, you have something?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what our plan was, and we had discussed this with landowners on multiple occasions on how do we make sure we're being thoughtful about what's going to be needed over the course of time. Now, as our attorney has stated, we don't have a crystal ball, so we can't, we can't know those numbers for certain. But I will tell you that one of the things that we do know is that we are working diligently with SWCD on a, on, on the five-year review of these ditches. In addition, is when we get these trees out of here, we are going to do a probably once every three years or so, that'll yet to be determined as it comes before you, when we talk about the maintenance plan, that we will do an aggressive spring program so that the costs of these tree removal is minimized or eliminated. So, and hopefully, if the trees go away, then we'll have less beeper dam that we have to take out as well. So we are being considerate about what we're doing here today, getting this ditch hopefully back into some function that it's been missing and get the repairs completed, and then how do we eliminate these types of overhead costs, particularly with the trees, as we move forward? So.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. We'll, I'm going to take Myron, and Sherry Picarner, you'll be next online.
Thank you.
One quick response. You said that the redetermination of benefits could be not reopened and case by case look at if there is an error. You told our avenue is that the county auditor is our next only way of appealing this assessment as far as it's concerned? I was told by the county auditor, that's totally done. We cannot revisit that. That's totally done. We have no say in it. We cannot go back at the determination of benefits. So if the county auditor is stating that, and you're saying not, that it can be looked at, we're getting conflicting information here. Which is it?
Mr. Chair, I, I want to make sure. I am not contradicting the county auditor. The county auditor is saying that the redetermination itself has been adopted and no appeals were taken from the redetermination of benefits. So in terms of appealing that action by the county board, that ability to appeal those redetermined benefits, that is closed. If there were errors that are discovered, and there is articulable facts as to the error, or if there is land that is not draining to the drainage system and is permanently restricted, there are options available to both landowners and the Drainage Authority to address those issues. But that is very separate from what the auditor stated, which is the appeal period for the redetermination of benefits is closed. They are permanent and in the record until either a new redetermination is initiated or until one of these actions and other actions under the statute is initiated. But again, we're not here about the redetermination of benefits, we're here about the repair. I don't think that anything I've said is in conflict with what the auditor said. They are two different issues. I'm just highlighting that there are statutory processes that may provide relief to landowners who feel that they were improperly determined to be benefited by the drainage system.
Okay, thank you. Sherry Picarner?
Um, yes, hi. Thank you very much for holding this meeting. I just have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. So I have an August 19th, 2011 assessment notice from the Stat County for this project, which was $87,050. Included in that is a very explicit every owner, their parcel, and what their cost is, a total breakdown. So here's a picture of it. If you can see that or not.
We can see it.
Okay. Anyway, so kind of a big project jump. Okay, so then I wanted to ask about the statute, the state statute. So they talk about beneficiaries. My land is a very, I mean, you don't really benefit from it at all, but we're being taxed on it, or we're being assessed for it. But what does it say about the statute about the JD3? Because they're benefiting from it also. So how, how are they assessed because of their benefit of it? Just like me as a landowner, is, I'm observing my land and beneficiary. So what would this statute say about them?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, I could not hear.
I couldn't hear much either.
Ms. Picarner, so you're asking about the statute. Could you just restate your question, ma'am?
Um, yes, I am what about the statute and the beneficiaries? And what it, what the statute says about JD3, because that, that is a beneficiary because it flows into 10, ditch 10.
Okay, thank, thank you, ma'am, for the question, Mr. Chair, members of the board. She's raising the issue about what about joint ditch number three? It utilizes ditch 10 as an outlet, and isn't it also benefited? And the answer to that is yes. And in fact, in the redetermination of benefits for ditch 10, the viewers determined an outlet charge to the entirety of JD3 of 7% of the total benefits on 10. That was based on two factors as articulated by the viewers at the redetermination of benefits. One was how much of ditch 10 is necessary to provide ditch three an outlet? And second, what is the volume capacity requirement of ditch 10 to provide an adequate outlet for ditch three? And what is the cost of providing that capacity? And so those two factors were used by the viewers in determining an outlet charge or an outlet benefit to ditch three as a whole. So again, for every doll, for every $100 that's spent on ditch 10, seven of those dollars are paid for by the beneficiaries on ditch three.
So then is the value then adjusted, or is that listed somewhere?
In the viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits of ditch 10, that benefit value for ditch three was articulated in that report. Notice was also given to all of ditch three as to the responsibility that they have for costs on ditch 10. They were given the opportunity to participate in those proceedings and the appeal. And so it is listed in the benefits role for ditch 10. And then when that, when that seven out of every $100 gets assessed to ditch three, then that is distributed among all the beneficiaries on ditch three according to their individual percentage of benefit on ditch three.
Okay, all right, that's good to know, thank you. Then I just have one more quick question, and that is in regards to the latest notification for this final hearing I received, and it notified me that basically my estimate went up 25.7% from the original notice that I got.
Thank you. I think there's maybe a little bit of confusion. So the notice that you received in August was a notice of the assessment that is, if you, if you paid it off early, it won't go on to your taxes, but if you did not, it will go on to your, starting and pay 23 taxes. And that was for, to cover costs of the redetermination of benefits as well as costs to date for the services of ISG for the repair, and also just basic maintenance, any costs that had been incurred, and, and future costs that may be, that may happen up until the point that the repair would commence. So this current notice that you're receiving is telling you what your costs would be based on, if we looked at option one in this revised repair report of the $1,088,000, that, that would be your cost for the repairs, which wouldn't be assessed until those repairs are completed.
Okay, all righty, so would that, I've already paid for the first notification, so is this in addition, or?
Yes, this would be in addition. So none of the costs for the repair would be assessed until the repairs are complete because we don't know what the actual final cost would be for the repair. We can give you an estimate based on what the engineer's estimate is, but the notice also did state that we, it, it is an estimate as we don't know until contracts are signed and work is complete.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chair? Cindy, do you have anything to say about Sherry's 1987? Was there actually repair done in 87? 2011, I'm sorry, 2011.
Madam Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, members of the board, there wasn't a, a repair done, but we have ongoing maintenance that occurs on all these ditches. And most of that is because it was discovered through some type of, of a review that there were things that were necessary, a lot of the cleaning of the ditches and some of the tree removals. As those costs get incurred, these folks are generally assessed probably once every two to three years. We have to have an appropriate level of fund balance to do this incidental maintenance that we, we, that we have coming to us. And when that fund balance gets low, we come before the board and they reestablish a maintenance fund for those ongoing incidental maintenance things. So we haven't had any kind of a major repair, but we might have had some fairly substantial cleanout that was done on a maintenance level. Thank you.
Well, the title of this says ditch 10, full cleanout, tile repair, and three-year maintenance fund. That's the title.
Cindy, it was for a ditch cleanout and maintenance fund, so a tile repair, I think.
Yes, correct.
Full cleanout, tile repair, and three-year maintenance fund.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if it's Daryl or Troy. If one of them just could address the, a question came up on the chat for the inspection of the culverts and making sure they're installed at the right level. So the inspection of the work, so they understand that.
If this project is to move forward, we actually have staff in the field on site doing the staking, the surveying, and then once the project is completed, we go back through and re-level all the tile and all the, all the culverts, excuse me, to make sure that they're putting at the right elevation, right places, and things like that. So there's, contract administration would be part of the project, which would include project inspection, bidding, and also cost estimates, pay estimates, and things like that. And then there's a final report that is issued to the county board that has all that detail and all that information in it.
So the final elevations, everything will be checked and documented?
Yep.
Thank you.
That's correct.
There would be a hearing to go over this and find out if there's any discretion with it.
Final hearing for the final pay estimate and also, correct.
Okay, any other public comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Ila June Zelman. I'm wondering, whose job is it to keep the ditches from having the trees in it? Is it the property owner, or who is it, whose, whose job is it? Because, and what would the cost be for the person that has them and with the person that doesn't have any trees in the ditch? Is there more of a cost when they are, or is there not a cost for, that's what I'm wondering?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ms. Zelman, maintenance, tree removal is considered, within the footprint of the ditch, is considered a maintenance requirement, and so it's a cost of the ditch system as a whole. And as you can imagine, there are some areas where this ditch passes that's all just open farmland or grassland, and so therefore there are no trees. Underlying landowners often maintain those buffer areas that are grassed because it's convenient to them anyway. That prevents weeds from incurring into their crops, those sorts of things. In trees areas, it's a little bit more difficult. Obviously, there are differences of opinions about trees, especially when in regard to a ditch. I mean, I love trees, don't get me wrong. I don't want the trees to go away, but I don't necessarily want the trees growing in the bottom of my ditch or on the ditch bank to the extent where equipment can't come in to do that work. So the, the removal of the trees is typically understood to be a maintenance obligation of the drainage system, which means that the drainage system beneficiaries end up having to pay for that, and we do understand that there's differential costs. That is not to say that an individual landowner cannot manage those trees themselves. That's not to say that some landowners don't go out and actually cut and keep that, keep that maintained. They do that as a favor to themselves and as a favor to the drainage system. But we have no mechanism in statute to acknowledge that, reimburse them for that, any of that. And in fact, the only entity that has author, authority to do work specifically in the drainage system or adjacent thereto is the Drainage Authority. So when private people are doing that work, although it might be very well-intentioned, it's not always, the, the, it's, it's not always the safest thing for the drainage system, as you can imagine, or for themselves. So we look at it as a cost of the drainage system. We understand that there's a differential cost because trees are on some properties and not on others. But again, repair requirements exist on some properties and not on others, but yet everyone has to pay according to their percentage of benefits. So that's how we treat the trees.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Anybody else online? Let's see, there's two chats online, but Jim Jerson's getting up. Why did he sit down? Go ahead.
Jim Jerson. There's been a lot of discussion here. Obviously, this is a very expensive project. We got a fair amount of money invested already, and I personally would encourage the board to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else with that? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
So motion, is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We, now we are going to go to, John, did you have something?
Well, I think you either go to deliberation or you're going to be moving toward a decision. I do have, and I did provide to the board a deliberation guide. It asks a series of six questions, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and I can walk through that if you don't have it readily available to you. You just poll the board and then let the board have some additional discussion and make a decision how it wants to proceed forward. So the first question, the definition of repair in the drainage code is to restore the function of the drainage system as nearly as is practicable to the originally constructed hydraulic capacity. And so the first question is, is the work proposed by the engineer, under any of the repair options, a repair as that term is defined by the drainage code? And so if the board generally feels that that is a yes to add that answer, then we move on to the next question. Is there any discussion or dispute over the answer to that question? Okay. Then the second question is, does the proposed repair and scope of proposed work, as recommended by the engineer, and again, this is under any of the repair options, address the conservation of soil, water, wetlands, forests, wild animals, and related natural resources? I will remind the board that in the engineer's presentation, they talked about the incorporation of best management practices, including side inlet control, and also limiting the repair to areas where that work was actually necessary, especially in, in repair option one. And so in doing so, they are seeking to reduce downstream sedimentation, peak flow staging, and other detrimental effects of the drainage. And so again, if the board finds that that question is, the answer to that question is yes, then we can move on. And so I'll just ask the board, is there any discussion or dispute as to that question? Seeing none, we'll move on to question three. Does a proposed repair create a risk of significant environmental or other harm? Again, the engineer has looked at this, has not concluded any significant harm, and has tried to incorporate actions, including the side inlet controls and other limitations on the scope of work in order to reduce that harm. So if the board finds the answer to that question is yes, then we can move on to the next question. Is there any discussion or dispute over the answer to question number three?
Clarification is, wouldn't that, does, does the proposed repair create a significant risk?
Oh, I'm sorry, if the answer should be no, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner, you are correct, Commissioner. Is there any dispute as to whether or not a significant environmental harm might occur as a result of the proposed work? I think the answer is no. Okay. Question number four, is the proposed repair of public utility benefit and welfare, this meaning is it necessary and will it sustain or restore the benefits to benefited property owners within the watershed of ditch 10? Unless there's any dispute that that's a no to the answer to that question, we move on to question five. Are the proposed repairs necessary, and are they in the best interest of the affected landowners? The board may want some discussion on this because this is where a limited discretion vests in the board. a limited discretion vests in the board to limit the scope of repair or the sequence of repair. And so the question really before you as to this item is, is repair option one versus repair option two versus repair option three? Does one of those options better address the interests of the affected landowners? And this is where I think I'm going to ask for some specific direction from the board as to which option, if it were to order the repair, which option it would propose to pursue.
Commissioner Breck, did you have something?
Now we're at the deliberation. All right, as far as the specific option, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes.
I think option one is been widely accepted by landowners. It's been vetted. I do appreciate, I think, the work that Troy and his staff did at the meeting, going through each of the culverts, each of the options was very fair and good. So I think that would meet our obligations. I think the other thing that was brought up at that meeting is if there were certain landowners who wanted to order additional work they paid for. I mean, I think we vetted those things pretty well. So I think option one is necessary, and we've whittled it down to just what's necessary. I'll have other comments on things, but as far as the options, that's where.
Any of the comments? And that would get us to where we would need to be.
I believe so, Mr. Chairman. And then finally, question six really has to do with, are we moving outside of the original construction footprint of the ditch? And the answer to that is no. There is no flattening of side slopes, there is no additional right-of-way required for this. And so we keep that in the question block just because it's one of those considerations that you have to take. But again, the engineer isn't recommending any work outside of the original construction footprint for ditch number ten. So then that leaves you to your various decisions today. And the big question that I would have for you before we make a final decision is, is the board intent on adopting findings in an order today? And that really is based on, have there been comments solicited today or received today that require specific mention in a set of findings in an order? Or do you believe that all comments received through the public comment process have been adequately considered and addressed at today's hearing? And if it's the latter, then we can move forward to adopt an order today.
Does everyone think the questions were answered?
Mr. Yeah, Mr. Chair, John, I am thinking that we should reconvene to consider the findings in an order later. And I think some of that will come out in our discussion and then the motion. And I think you presented that as an option also.
Correct. And so with that, then, Mr. Chair, I will leave it to the board. But it would seem as if you are looking at scenario A in your deliberation guide.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a quick question? John, if there is grant funding found or a way to work with the township similar on their costs that we have with other cities and townships on road projects, can it still be ordered and those dealt with just as an overall reduction to the project? Or how would that fit into that? Could you explain that?
Mr. Chair, ma'am, the answer is yes, that can be dealt with after. So if the repair is ordered and then subsequently the county board or staff or the SWCD or some other entity is able to locate additional funding or to justify additional funding that can be brought from the outside into the work, that can be dealt with after the fact. And we would put a placeholder in any order of the board to encourage staff and the county to look for additional funding sources to defray any portion of the expense of the repair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, county administrator read my mind. So I think with that being said, that we're looking at scenario C. Is that correct then? That that's what we would be considering?
No, you'd still be under option A, but.
We just want reconvene.
You will reconvene.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is that I will put in the order portion, whatever you, for consideration at your reconvened hearing, I will put in the order portion a placeholder that encourages staff to look for and leaves the option open for that additional funding if it becomes available during the pendency of the repair.
Perfect, thank you.
Just a clarification, if I'm mistaken, Mr. Chair. The additional funding, wouldn't that scenario come into the, at the time of assessment? That we'd say the total project has been reduced by X because of funding sources? And so the amount being assessed is X, and wouldn't that all be at that time?
That is correct, Commissioner, but I want to make sure we articulate it in the order that leaves that open as an option. Otherwise, the default is going to be, hundred percent of the cost of this is going to be assessed to landowners. If we leave it open as an option in the order, then already all up until the time when that assessment is finally certified, any number of those funds can come in to defray the expenses.
Okay.
Okay, good question, thank you. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple. I'll get them off the table. I think I just want to sum up some of the conversation here and conversation I've heard from landowners the past weeks. This isn't something we do very often, you know? Once or twice a century, there's a big repair. So we are all learning. I mean, even those who've sat at this table the longest haven't ordered a repair of this size. It's a big deal. And at least from everything I've learned that Mr. Colby has helped us learn, this is a little bit different than streets and other type of infrastructure. And we are limited a bit with the statute about it just benefiting these owners. So thank you for your patience, as we've learned this too. And frankly, over the last two years, spent a lot of time learning about it and questioning why it has to go this way. I think it was brought up by several landowners, and it's not a good or a bad thing. But the culture of ditch maintenance up till recently has been let spend as little as possible. And we really didn't do, we met statutory requirements. But yeah, maybe maintenance wasn't what many people in this room would like to see. And I think we've heard that loud and clear, that many of the owners would rather we have a consistent maintenance program, spend a little bit going on so we don't have this kind of big, huge repair. So, Mr. Chair, and I would like to do this, I hope this doesn't cut off discussion because I think there's still room for discussion. But I would like to make a motion right now. And I'll move that the drainage authority order the repair of county ditch ten as detailed in engineer's report is option one. That based on the repair report, the engineer's recommendation and the evidence presented, the drainage authority find that the engineer's recommended repair is necessary for the best interests of the affected property owners and best supports considerations of public utility, benefit, and welfare. That based on the evidence presented, the work can occur within existing easements or rights of way acquired for the drainage system and to allow for the preparation of detailed findings in an order. We close this hearing and will reconvene February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three at eight-thirty a.m., at which meeting we will consider findings in an order for the repair in a matter consistent with the proceedings. And to add on to that, that we do, as we have discussed, we will look at any outside resources to help offset some of these costs. And that's my motion. Had to say it that way.
There is a motion. Is there a second? There is a second from Commissioner Beer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, we're going to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
So you are recessed and the hearing is continued as Commissioner Whitman-Brecky specified to February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three at eight-thirty a.m. in this location.
All right, thank you. With that, we're going to take a, let's take a ten-minute break. And we will reconvene as the Scott County Board at, let's go at eleven-fifteen, all right? We're in recess then. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all. Okay, good morning again. This is February seventh, twenty-twenty-three. I didn't see any amendments to the agenda. And we had.
Mr. Chairman, I do just want to say we updated agenda number seven point one to reflect a change. We had a date that was, that was wrong in there. It was July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one versus July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. I just want to alert folks to that. It was noted also when it was updated.
Okay, so that will be put in there. Thank you. And we did have a new employee. I don't know if I see Christian. I think he's gone right now, so we won't go through new employees. You receive the minutes in your packets and addition deletions or corrections to those minutes. And if not, is there a motion to approve said minutes? There's a motion. Is there a second? And there is a second. By Commissioner Beer, if we didn't hear that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of interested citizens, limited to five minutes per person or subject. If anyone would like to speak, or if there's anybody online that would like to say something, I don't see anybody.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note that we are in receipt of an email regarding Renfest and in receipt of an email regarding the forty-two reentry house. Both of those will be read in next week. One of them is part of the public hearing for Renfest, the other one in the five minutes.
Okay, great, thank you. So nobody else, then we will move on to our consent agenda. These are deemed non-conversial and normally passed in one motion. We have ten items today. Six point one, adopt resolution number two zero two-three dash two-two, approving an amendment, amended solid waste license for Buckingham Companies located in the city of Prior Lake. Six point two, adopt resolution number two zero two-three dash two-three, approving entering into a cooperative maintenance agreement with the city of Shakopee for traffic signal installation at County Highway one oh one and Shenandoah Drive. Six point three, adopt resolution number two zero two-three dash three-six, approving an interim use permit to operate a sand and gravel mine for Martin Marietta Materials, Inc., applicant and Melkerson Sales, Inc., property owner in section sixteen of Louisville Township. Commissioner Brecky, I'm losing my voice.
Oh, my.
Can you do six point four? Thank you.
Six point four, approved payroll processing and personnel actions. Six point five, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, approving amendment to the agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for additional equipment. Six point six, adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, approving a new tower lease agreement with T-Mobile Central LLC. Six point seven, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, approving amendment number four to the school-linked mental health grant contract. Six point eight, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero three-five, setting a public hearing for ten a.m. on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three to consider action on amending conditional use permit number six one six dash C dash eight issued to Mid-America Festivals Corporation to operate the Minnesota Renaissance Festival and Trail of Terror. Six point nine, adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight, approving a budget amendment to the capital improvement program for a sheriff's patrol boat. Six point ten, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, amending resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two, appointing commissioners and other county officials to boards and committees for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brecky. That, those are our ten items on consent. Are there any you would like to have pulled for discussion? And if not, is there a motion to?
I don't want to pull one, but I just want to make a comment on item number six point two, the signal light at Shenandoah and one oh one. And I appreciate the work that the staff did to get this done. I know that it's been a conversation for quite a while, so that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion, and remember, there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move to seven point, thank you. So we're going to move on to seven point one. That is to adopt resolution number two zero two-three dash four zero, approving amendment number one to the contract with Damascus Way and Reentry Center. Molly?
Community Corrections. I am here today requesting that the board adopt that resolution number twenty twenty-three forty, approving the amendment number one to the contract with Damascus Way Reentry Incorporated. The county entered into an agreement with Damascus Way Reentry Incorporated in twenty twenty-one to provide a reentry and halfway housing program. Homelessness is a critical issue within the state of Minnesota and a barrier to the successful reintegration and housing stability of individuals leaving Minnesota prisons and for those on probation supervision within communities. Research has shown a correlation between experiences of homelessness and recidivism. This does not mean that persons who experience homelessness are dangerous. Instead, it illuminates that housing stability is foundational to a client's success in the correction system and that the correction system can do more to support housing stability and prevent homelessness. As part of this program, Damascus Way provides connections to community resources and it makes referrals for clients such as community social services, AANA, legal aid, financial assistance, primary care, mental health, substance abuse treatment, transportation, employment, and education. They collaborate with us and correctional agents to discover any issues or behaviors that may be warning signs of relapse and/or offending, and will assist clients with locating permanent housing. The original intent was to operate two homes, which this amendment will help support. The additional funds being requested will allow more staff to both support and case manage the individuals in the Prior Lake home as well as provide more surveillance and accountability to program adherence. Currently, the Community Corrections Department does vet and refer all clients to currently the Shakopee home, but will include the Prior Lake home. And all clients must have historical ties to Scott County. In response to concerns from Prior Lake City Council, the community residents, the county has additionally committed to the following. No clients that have been convicted of criminal sexual conduct offenses will be referred to the Prior Lake home. The driveway will not be relocated to the back of the home. And I will create a community team in partnership with Prior Lake City Leadership related to the Prior Lake home. The additional funds to the Damascus Way contract will increase the not-to-exceed amount to four hundred thousand dollars annually. This covers inflation costs since the last contract, staffing hours at two locations, case management, and some actual startup costs. This includes IT expenses for the installation of security cameras, equipment such as Wi-Fi and computers, and other miscellaneous household items. It should also be noted that the Prior Lake home is ahead of schedule on the renovations being completed. So we're looking at starting to accept our first clients around mid-April to early May. So at this time, I'd respectfully like to ask that the board adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three forty, approving amendment number one to the contract with Damascus Way Reentry Center Incorporated. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brunner. Is there any questions or comments for her, Commissioner Beer?
Yeah, one of the questions that comes up on this, I mean, there's plenty of questions. What did success look like for this house before this funding? And what, how will we know this will be successful with this extra money? That's, those are questions that kind of still linger.
Okay, so right now in the Shakopee home, in this past year, the board workshop, the latest data that I gave you was sixteen referrals have gone through that Shakopee home. And fourteen so far of the sixteen have been successful. The two that were not successful were due to relapse, not new criminal offenses. So we also consider that a different type of success. We attribute that, originally, the plan was to have staffing shared between the two homes when we originally wrote the grant. And seeing that we're having such great success at the Shakopee home and in combination with the concerns of Prior Lake neighborhood and leadership, we're suggesting that we start off with replicating some of that staffing that occurs at the Shakopee home to the Prior Lake home. So we're hoping that, again, that staff to client ratio is, stays as low as we can. And our odds of that being successful exponentially increase, we think, we hope.
So like if there's some number of, like, we don't have necessarily a number of, oh, this happened or that happened to say like, okay, this is not working, we need to ditch this thing. We don't necessarily have that.
Correct.
Parameters.
Correct. What we know is that if we don't have this additional money, then we'll be sharing the hours of the staff at the Shakopee home. So half the amount of time will be spent at the Shakopee home and the Prior Lake home, which was the original intent. And it is still a good model. The question is whether or not we want to start the Prior Lake home with a similar start that the Shakopee home with the amount of staffing hours. And that's predominantly the amount of money we're asking for.
And that's what this will do. This will mirror sort of what, not sort of, this will mirror. This will mirror sort of what, not sort of, this will mirror what Shakopee and a lot of the neighbors have been asking for that type of, is it supervision? Because they're not, they're on parole, but they're not under, yeah.
Right. So we...
So they're on parole.
Not necessarily. We don't have parole in Minnesota, so it is called supervised release.
That's the old, that's the old, that's the old term, right? They're on probation.
They're in supervision of some sort, yes, with us.
So they've served their sentence.
They're not necessarily coming out of an institution either. They could be just on probation, which means that...
Right, right.
Yep. So it could be somebody that's never set foot into a jail or a prison that also could be referred.
Right, so they're on probation, right? I got to get my new, updated terms, Community Corrections. They're not in custody of a jail or a prison.
Correct.
They may have been, but now they're out, or they may not have been, and they're simply on probation.
Correct.
And so this number of staffing will mirror closely the Shakopee house to give them that supervision of Damascus Way, not necessarily Community Corrections.
Yeah, so supervision, I would say that they are more of the case manage with the individuals. We're providing the supervision from like the correctional accountability standpoint, and then we're working alongside Damascus Way. They're working like multiple more hours than we could ever do, being that they're in the home, you know, they have a case manager at least 40 hours a week, and then they'll have some subsequent part-time staff that check in on the guys on the evenings and then the weekends. But they're helping them get to, you know, work, or their medical appointments, or helping them get employment, maybe they need to get on housing stability or SNAP, those sorts of things. So they're working with the clients to meet all of their requirements that the court has set forth, but they're not doing, and then they provide obviously like accountability in the home, making sure they're following house rules and things like that, but they're on supervision with us from a formal standpoint.
And so just as a, you know, we'll get an update, but here's just a little thumbnail. So I was at the city council, you were at the workshop, and then was at the city council meeting with Prior Lake yesterday. We know we've had the letter from the city council, we know that there's been a response sent back to the city council, which they discussed in the workshop. So part of the, I think there were six, I think I remember the mayor pointing out, you know, you talked about the driveway, you talked about adding these hours, we talked about the screening of some sort, which could be up to that committee, setting up that committee was the other one, and what was the, I feel like I'm missing something, the added hours, and potentially the longer stay, or I don't know what the right word is. Originally, it was like a 30, 60, 90-day model, and that is different now. Is that right?
Yes, and I think it always has been the case. Really, what we're trying to do is provide, as long as a client needs, to be able to get into that permanent housing instability. So as an example, some individuals are in the home waiting for an impatient bed to open up. Obviously, they're going to transition out when they go to an impatient bed. We're not like, there's not a 30, 60, 90-day timeline. There really never has been. It's just been an average amount of time that people have gone through in the Shakopee home. But yes, people can stay, in fact, I know we have somebody there that's been four to six months even as we speak into the Shakopee home. So really, we're trying to individualize our planning with people. We don't want to keep people for longer than they need to as well. If you have permanent, you know, stable housing, then that's exactly what the goal is. And so, but yes, it opens that up. There is no, like, it's not a short-term sort of thing going forward.
Right, and the other one that I forgot, which is probably the biggest one, is the no sex offenders.
Correct.
The one I'm pushing for. And so that is all in the letter. It's not necessarily a contract, but it's a good faith. We're putting that forward collectively. So I would say that the city council, and I do not want to put words in their mouths as individuals, but generally as a city council saw that as the kind of the county's best and final offer. I don't know if it's an offer, but nonetheless, concessions that we're willing to make to move forward. They also want to make sure that it's understood that it's not necessarily that they're happy about that, but considering that all of these different moves have been made, some have said that was more than they thought they would ever see. So the neighbors that were in attendance last night probably would, not removed, probably, and some of their voices would say they would prefer it to be licensed, and the city talked about that in workshop in depth, because if it went to state licensure, the probability of sex offenders being allowed, we could not say that they would be disallowed. Is that a fair characterization?
We would have, we would have to do some more research in that area, but we may be up against some of the housing, what is that Fair Housing Act?
Yes, it'd be discrimination of sorts of...
It could be.
And then licensure would allow six people, I believe, as well. So it did not seem like the city wanted to go down that route whatsoever. Again, I know, that's just my summary of it. I don't want to put words in their mouths. I think we will get a response or some sort of acknowledgement, would be the word of the letter, in those conditions, again, maybe not the best word, but that was kind of my takeaway from the meeting last night, the two different meetings.
Commissioner Olick.
I would like to tour the house. In other words, when it's all ready, you're about to open. I think it'd be worthy if we had a tour over there. That's one thing. The other is, I think we need to figure out a formal thank you, recognition to heart for remodeling that house. I don't know what that would be, but I hope it's something that we would consider and work on, because they did a lot of work over there.
Absolutely. And I know Damascus Way is, has been open to, also, the Shakopee home is open, as we all are, to the Prior Lake home, so however we plan that would be great, and they have done a beautiful job on the home, so.
Commissioner Beer.
Oh, just a comment. Oh, sorry, Jody, wait for us. Comment about the length of stay, and I understand that if we look at like the stay and extrapolate the number of people, it's a lot of people, but I think we should continue to talk about that average, because, yeah, if somebody has a job and a place to live and is all good, they shouldn't be required to stay. That's our hope. And when there is somebody who just needs a little bit more time, you know, especially, I think somebody, somebody very young, that type of thing. So I think we can continue all to do better to talk about that length of stay, that it's really an average, and it's how long a person needs, or how long it's appropriate. Maybe somebody's there and they'll get asked to move on because they're just not an appropriate fit with the house. So I don't want, I don't think we should be giving up any of that flexibility to do that. So in how, I don't know how we can continue to help people understand that length of stay thing, that that, by making it more specific, could actually be detrimental to the folks there, to the neighborhood, to anyone. So just a comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any specifics. I think that's a good, because that's the whole purpose of this, is to get people onward and upward, to move them, to give them an opportunity, again, to figure out how to be productive members of society. That's the goal. It was just early on, it's like, oh, we're going to be cycling these people through, they don't have enough time, you know, some people will be plenty of time, some people it won't be. So, yeah, I don't think there's been a offer, so to speak, of everyone's going to stay four to six to nine months. It's just that, it's a case-by-case what each condition, each person needs. Is that a fair assessment?
Absolutely. And if I may add some additional data that we kind of ran to that point, we were trying to make sure we could serve as many people as we need. We know we have more need. By the last time we ran our numbers, there was 105 people that are homeless on supervision in Scott County with us right now. And so we, however, with that said, we do not move people on that it's too early, we want to make sure that this is successful. As I said before, there's been 16 people that have been referred in place at the Shakopee home. Even if we took an average of 10 people per home, so we're even decreasing the amount that they stayed longer in the home, and we served a total of 20 people, with this particular ask for the increased funding, now, part of that is the startup cost, so if we're using, most of this is for the staffing, if we're using that like $360,000 of that per year with 20 people total, that's $18,000 per person per year, and if you take that and divide that by what jail is per day at $193.50 a day, that's only 93 days in jail per person. Our people generally, not, some people are in probation like I've already described. We also have people that have been incarcerated, whether that's prison or our jail, far longer than 93 days, and we're seeing better outcomes. 14 out of 16 are doing well. So in terms of like the, and on top of that, we have one of our first people that came into the Shakopee home, he had been to prison, I believe, six times. He is still, he's now completely off paper. He is making a living wage, he's paying his rent, and the other key thing is he's reconnected with his son, that he had never had contact with before because of all of these times in and out of prison. They still have contact to this day, so we're also helping generational, you know, groups of people there as well. So I just want to break it down into some other terms, in terms of what we pay for in different spaces, and this, to me, is how we want to invest in people, in my opinion.
Okay, cool.
Great. Yep.
So, I mean, that is the unfortunate truth. Like, doing nothing, we still pay, the collective, we pay a ton of dough to this, whatever you want to call it. So the goal, you know, because that was part of my, my question is, okay, we're increasing the money. Now, with this ARPA fund, we got the tails, you know, the whole idea was to have better outcomes for lower cost, and now we're upping the cost, but it still costs a ton of money to keep people in jail. That's the unfortunate truth. So the goal is that this would actually cost less money, changing generational transformation versus off paper? Is that the lingo for like, hey, they're not going to...
Like, experience that he's not in any supervision anymore.
They're not, we're trying to work you guys out of jobs. You know that, right?
Yeah, I hope that...
I would love that. That'd be so amazing.
That would be great.
There's other needs, so don't worry, there's other places, but, so that was one of my questions, is this extra money is still lower cost than doing nothing?
Correct. The same individual that I was talking about, I actually met with him when he was released from prison. He had to walk to Carver County without a cell phone, without any access to transportation, with a hotel voucher, waiting for the Shakopee bed to be open, and he said several times along that walk, when he was desperate, he thought about calling the people that he probably shouldn't be calling, and he didn't, and he had hope, and he went to that home, and now we have this outcome. And so, again, a guy that had had a lot of relapses is really seeing some huge successes.
Two more questions, I think. The letter we sent to the city with the committee, I forget what we're calling, but that was the one that draft on it.
Yep.
So that, originally called for, I think, two neighbor, two folks from the neighborhood, I think in a 10-member, if I remember, eight or 10-member panel. It's draft, so we're open to maybe more than two, if one can't make it, one can, yada, yada.
Yep. Oh, go ahead.
That just came from, I think, the suggestion that night. I think we'd be very open to how they want to handle that and coordinate with the city to make sure that's accomplished.
And I, that's what I thought, but I thought we should at least, you know, I know it's a draft and huge letters. And then the historical tie piece, unrelated to the last question, but do we always do historical ties if we're funding this, whatever we're doing, historical ties to Scott County, or is this something specific to this house?
That term is a common term for us in many ways. Again, those coming out of prison, they are usually released to their county of historical ties. So you could come down here, commit an offense, be sent to prison, but if your historical ties, so you were born and raised, or you lived the majority of your time in Ramsey, then when you're released from prison, you would go to Ramsey for supervision. So that is a kind of a term used of like, where are most of your roots, and then who has that kind of fiscal responsibility for you? So it does show up at least in our department in different spaces.
Okay, maybe one last, semi-last. There was an article, I think I just saw it in the paper in Jordan or whatever, where, you know, talking about Community Corrections and the funding gaps that we all know well, but I think that's kind of come into this a little bit. Because there's Danny. What's Community Corrections? Is it, if we had the proper funding as outlined in the other corrections, was it, is it three points that would shift our levy? I thought it was like two, two and a half, but maybe three?
Yeah, it's about, it's between two and a half and three percentage points of our levy. It's roughly that. It's gone, I think it's below 38% now that the state funds of our corrections cost.
So, yeah, I don't want to do a deep dive, but maybe I thought it was less than that, but it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money that we, Scott County, have to levy on Scott County taxpayers to fill the gap, that the state says, hey, you guys are doing this, but we're not giving you enough money to do that. Different situation, it's Community Corrections, but that doesn't impact the reentry house. That's two different, two different things.
Correct. Yep.
We are fighting that funding gap because that's just another Minnesota income tax, in my opinion, couches, but Scott County tax levy drives me nuts.
Commissioner Beer, that was your number-one priority coming out of the legislative session, along with the 48, the child paperwork, and then the recapture of the deputy register fund. So those four are in our limelight every time we talk to somebody.
But I just wanted to bring that up as it relates to this. It's two different situations.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay, was that a motion? Was that a motion to adopt that resolution?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Brett.
I just want to thank you for the work that you've been doing. I always think of this issue as a homeless issue, because I know the impact that people moving out of the jail are having on our communities, and the fact is, is that we're doing something to change those lives, so, and change the cost also to the cities to care for those individuals who are homeless. So I really appreciate everything that you're doing, and being open-minded and being creative in solving this issue. We're really being pushed to solve homelessness in our communities, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to be successful and to be proactive and to do something that's really unique and different. So, thank you.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Oh, okay.
To adopt Resolution 2023-40, approving the amendment number one to the contract with Damascus Way Reentry Center, Inc.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? Okay. With that, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Molly. Okay. We're going to submit our committee reports, commissioner updates in writing, if that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think that would be good, so we can get you next door to the RTF work session.